Meeting. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a scout here. Do you want to lead us in the pledge?
And anywhere in particular you want me to stand?
That's good.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chief Coleman, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
If you'd like to pray with me, please bow your heads. Dear Holy Father, we come to you tonight for the business of the council. We ask for your blessings on those that are making the decisions, those who are presenting, and everyone watching here and afar. We ask that you give our council wisdom and direction and guidance, and just bless them and their families. Protect them as they travel to and from. We ask that you also bless our first responders, and especially one of our own, who lost her husband this week. We ask for your special comfort and caring for her. We ask you to bless those that are serving here and far away, and just give us peace and direction and your love. We ask you for all these things. In your name. Amen.
All right. I'd like to call the meeting order. It's Monday, February 17th. At approximately 6:30 PM, we have all members of council present. We have no ceremonial items or presentations, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. What's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
I move we approve the minutes with one change, and that is changing the word "procreations" to "appropriations" in my report.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, there are... Okay, we're moving on to public comment. I've got two request-to-speak forms. The first one is from Katrina Shaddick.
Katrina Shaddick, 1133 Covington Street, Oviedo. And I submitted, I created and submitted a petition to y'all, and every time someone signed it, it was supposed to go right to your emails, but I don't think you received it, so I'm just going to read the petition, and if there's any time left, you can ask me questions, or I can follow up with that. So the petition is entitled "Stop Future Development on Oviedo's Twin Rivers Golf Course." And it says, "To the Honorable Megan Sladek, Mayor of Oviedo, and Council Members Bob Pollak, Keith Britton, Jeff Chudnow, and Judith Laura Smith, dear mayor and council, please direct..." This is the ask of the petition. "...please direct the Oviedo City Attorney to, one, meet with the Twin Rivers HOA Attorney to discuss the title document regarding the Twin Rivers Golf Course, and, two, make an official determination that the Twin Rivers Golf Course can never be built upon. We, the people, have become increasingly concerned about the possibility of development on the Twin Rivers Golf Course, especially now that the Seminole County Commissioners recently and unanimously voted to consider a land swap involving Econ Wilderness area. The Econ Wilderness area is less than two miles from the Twin Rivers Golf Course. We, the people, request written and enforceable documentation to prevent future development on the Twin Rivers Golf Course. We, the people, paid for the purchase of Twin Rivers Golf Course and want ironclad protections for our investment purchase. We, the people, value the Econ River and the Econ Corridor Project, both of which border the Twin Rivers Golf Course, and both of which would be severely and negatively impacted by any development on the Twin Rivers Golf Course. Thanking y'all in advance and for considering our request." We had over 200 people sign it in a few hours. I have boosted it on Facebook, and I'm sure I can get a bunch more, but if I don't have to do that, I don't want to. So I'm hoping we can get some ironclad, definite, enforceable promises and guarantees, because I was flabbergasted that the Seminole County Commissioners are considering swapping the Econ Wilderness area that we paid for. Taxpayers paid for that after we approved a ballot on that. So if they can do that, you know, what can be done with golf course? And I know you brought it up before, and I would hope that y'all could bring it up, vote on it, and get something solid for us, because a lot of people are very concerned about it. Okay? Thank you.
All right. The next item is... The next request to speak is Theodore...
Mello.
Mello.
Hi, my name is Theodore Mello. I live at 56 East Second Street, Chileo, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the golf course, too. I'm born and raised here. My dad actually built the golf course, so it's kind of hitting home with me. I know it really hasn't done well over the years. I don't know what its particular state is in now, so... But I can't see having you guys build more on top of what's already built, and I don't think that you can get the water to the people there anyways. But I was wondering if you might be able to maybe vote to like a five, like a one, two, three, four, five, six, six to one vote, six to oh vote, you know, to where you guys had to unanimously vote for any altercation to the property? That might be a good, reasonable solution. Maybe have some of the people in the area, you know, talk to you about it, find out what would be a better solution than to just build houses on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was all the request-to-speak forms. Is there anybody else wishing to address council at this time? Hearing none. I'm going to close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and two seconds. Madam Mayor, you have a floor?
I was really close to wanting to pull one off, so if y'all saw me sneak in at the last minute and talking with the Parks and Rec Director over here, that is because there is a really pricey wall that is going to be approved by this consent agenda if everybody votes in favor of it. And I wanted to explain to everybody why I'm okay with it. That room has not been used over at... This is the big multipurpose room over at Riverside Park. It hasn't been used since last April, because it's not particularly safe, what has happened with some of the trusses in there, and it's also just hard to use, because the room is so large. So rather than having three separate smaller spaces, it's all one big thing, and then these wall separators are physically connected to the trusses, and they have been compromised. So that's why I'm okay with that one. Let me hop down here real quickly. Wanted to also point out in one of them that there is an update to the standard operating procedures involving uniforms, and it does say that if... I'll just make it real personal to all of us up here. We are allowed to go and get shirts embroidered that say, you know, "Megan Sladek, Mayor of Oviedo." This policy specifies that it is not appropriate for me to go out campaigning while wearing that shirt, and I think that's a good thing, and I just want to make sure that everybody in this room knows it, and, you know, I'm sure all of us will abide by that policy as well. And two thumbs up to Oviedo Point Medical Office, zero deviations requested.
All right. Is that all you've got?
That's it.
I'm not sure who our second or was.
You can go first.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
No. There's nothing in particular I want to bring out, except maybe the Black History Month proclamation. I thought that was nice of you to suggest that last time. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Any more comments? All right. Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the public hearing. Hold on one second. All right. This is for a comprehensive future land use map amendment for ALIS at Oviedo. This is... This item is to transmit it to the... To Tallahassee to get them to review it. Mr. Cobb? Yes, Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, actually, there's two items that involve this one property. One is the future land use map amendment, which is ordinance number 1690, and then there's also a zoning map amendment, which is ordinance number 1691. The staff and the applicant are probably going to do just one presentation and encompass everything into it, but you, as a council, need to take two actions tonight. With the ordinance number 1690, as you mentioned, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is a request to transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, which is the first phase of the comprehensive plan process, which is known as the transmittal phase. They'll review it and then send it back to us and let us know if they have any issues. The zoning map amendment, this is your first reading, and so tonight you'll be asked to schedule a public hearing to coincide with the public hearing for the comprehensive plan amendment. And so I just wanted to let you know that we need to have this public hearing for the transmittal of the comprehensive plan amendment, have your action on it, and then when we get to the first reading, then we'll ask you to do a separate action on it. Do not combine them, even though since these... Both of these projects, both of these ordinances involve the same property, the staff and the applicant will do one presentation for you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Correa and let her give the staff presentation.
Actually, I think I skipped the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only.
That is true.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and do that, and then we'll have Dr. Correa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the first one being ordinance 1690, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the future land use map of approximately 12.36 acres of land generally located south of Mitchell Hammock Road and west of Claretly Evans Way as follows. Approximately 7.76 acres from downtown mixed-use, south of Mitchell Hammock Road sub-area, DMU, to mixed-use MU, approximately 4.60 acres from commercial CM to mixed-use MU, providing for legislative intent, implementing actions, a saving provision, scripters' errors, conflicts, and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. All right. Now we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today, before we get into the memos for the two ordinances that we have, and Mrs. Pierre is going to present them, I decided to do a presentation on the overview of development in the city and to show how this development, this project, fits into the overall plan for the city. And I think this is over a while, that we had a couple of public hearings that I would like to clarify some topics. One thing is that everything that we do, that we recommend approval, has to be compliant with the comprehensive plan and with the Land Department Code, from a fence permit to a zoning map amendment, a future land use map amendment. The conplan policies and the comprehensive plan is set in stone, the policies and the map, until it's amended. The same thing for the LDC and the zoning map. So these are living documents, so we have the opportunity to change them. But tonight, you are going to have two applications, one for a future land use map amendment. We have two types of comprehensive plan amendments. One is the future land use map, and the other one is a tax amendment, which would be the policies. Tonight, you have only the future land use map for one... For five parcels in the city, and then you have also the zoning map amendment. But I want to make this clarification, that the recommendation of approval has to be against the conplan and the LDC. Okay. The other topic that I wanted to discuss is there is still a lot of discussion on development versus no development, and it's never how we approach a project when they come to us. Because for us, first of all, we recognize property rights, right? If a property has entitlements, the city doesn't have the right to say no to development. But what... The way we approach in any project, any applicant coming to us, is to go into the qualities of the development. So what are the features that that development is bringing that is, in the end of the day, bringing value to the city? So, and this is something that I would like also to encourage and invite the residents to come to us with specific features that they would like to see in a development. That is the kind of conversation that we wanted to have with the boards and also with the residents. So what kind... What are the qualities that we want to attract in a development, and what are the qualities that we are trying to avoid in a development? We know that we are in a paradigm shift, and I like this code that says that we cannot solve the problems by using the same kind of thinking framework that was used to create them. And for us is that if we allow the same type of development that we allowed in the past, we should expect the same results. And I'm going a little bit deeper on that. So what is... What are the situations that brought us to have the same roads being congested over and over? That brought us a pattern of limited connectivity, right, in circulation network? Or having to use the car to go to every activity? We had to get into a car to move from one place to the other. And also being part of a metropolitan area in the region, Orlando metropolitan area, there has been ranked number one in unsafety for pedestrians. And that is a report that is given by the Danger by Design Report, and the city had... The metropolitan area of Orlando has been ranked number one for years. So let's try to understand what are the issues that we are facing and how to bring a different type of development. So the suburban pattern of development, if we get into the... What are the principles? The idea is that we would segregate uses, so we would have residential, commercial, and industrial, and we would protect... The idea was to protect the residential use. And even within the residential use, we would segregate different lot sizes. So you have large, you know, lots on one side, small, smaller, and medium lots, all separated. And the idea is that it would be better to have fewer roads connecting these neighborhoods that would be in silos, and that... Those roads, which would be the arterial roads, would be the connecting instead of having a grid system. And we would avoid congestion by minimizing... By maximizing speed. So you'd get out of these neighborhoods, get into arterial roads, and move quickly to wherever you want to go. Well, what happened, because it was so much auto-dependent, everybody had to have a car to go from one use to the other. Everybody was using the same roads. So that is a typical picture of the result of the suburban pattern, and you have a lot of the same roads being congested and with more and more cars. Well, the idea was, when that was created, and how do we solve that? Well, let's widen the roads. With that, not only we invite more cars to the roads, but we also reinforce a pattern of development that we want... That was not sustainable, right? Because there is a limit to how much you can widen the roads. Plus, if you see a situation like that, an environment like that, it's very dangerous for a pedestrian to cross. So that is what makes us an unsafe place for pedestrians. In the residential, if you go closer to residential development, you see that most of the developments are based on cul-de-sacs or gated communities that do not connect to each other, so there is no connectivity. There is very little destination points that you can walk to next to the residential, because again, the idea was to segregate uses, and very even poor sidewalk connection within the neighborhoods. With that little vibrancy in the public spaces, and so poor attention to public spaces, and many times the public roads are perceived as a private, as private areas. Few entry points, and again, by design. So we have neighborhoods in the city that only have one access point, which makes them more vulnerable, right, for safety purposes when we have an emergency and that access is blocked. But that is by design, that they could have additional access points, but they chose to have one access point to protect the neighborhood. So it's a design that automatically creates a traffic burden on the arterial roads. The commercial pattern of development for the suburban development is again strip malls, so they function as almost like drive-through developments. And through the arterials, you have also drive-through businesses. Again, little vibrancy on the public space, because you go to those strip malls, there is... There isn't really a public space. It's the parking lot. And the parking lot, because the development was designed for cars, is placed in between the road and the building, right? So it's not pedestrian-friendly if you're coming on foot. The buildings are set way back, creates issues with visibility, because it's difficult to see signs from the buildings from the road. So what happens is that we have those huge signs. Businesses are competing with signs by size, not by design, right? Because they want to have larger signs. And many times landscape becomes issues, too, because trees grow and they prevent, you know, people from seeing signs. So we have, and that's not uncommon, to have the requests from developers to say, "Well, the trees are blocking the view. We need to cut the trees," right? And these are all issues created, again, by design. So what is the urban pattern? The urban pattern reverts a lot of those previous features. First, it's based on a grid system. Why? Because it's the most efficient way to move people and goods, right? And if you have more density, you have to be more efficient in how you circulate things. It's based on mixed use, so it's more mixed-use oriented. The beauty of mixed use is that you have internal trips that you can capture, right? Provides for connectivity. Again, it has to be more efficient, so it has to provide for different ways for people to move around. So it's... Because it's not only the number of trips you add to the road, it's how you disperse those trips, ride those cars. So it's... The grid system is the most efficient one, and that picture on the bottom left is from the city of Barcelona. So again, a larger city, but all in the grid system. The buildings are close to the street, so bring more vibrancy to the public space, and it's depending on the size of the block, and if it's well-planned, it's very walkable. And the public street becomes the center of the action. So the suburban pattern, just to make a quick comparison, it's single use on one side, so you need to commute to every single activity. The urban pattern gets... Proposes mixed use. One is low density, so you need to have a lot of land, and you keep on creating new development that expand service lines, and that is the definition of sprawl. Urban pattern is based on higher density, and it's based on developing... That is development that is more compact and that is infill. So it's trying to use areas in the city that already are serviced by infrastructure and services. One has poor circulation connectivity with a lot of gated communities and cul-de-sacs, while the urban has a higher circulation pattern and pushes for multiple connections and increased road capacity, not only for cars, but also for other modes of transportation. One is outer-based, the other one is multi-modal-based. One has a limited focus on limited realm, so the suburban pattern. And the urban pattern, because everything happens in the streets and in the public areas, you have a lot of urban furniture. You have benches, you have amenities, you have public art, so that is the idea of an urban environment. While one segregates uses, the other promotes interactions and synergies between uses. So basically, when we receive the project, and let me clarify, we are talking about new development in the development corridor of the city. We are not talking about changing the pattern of the suburban neighborhoods that we already have in the city, right? We are talking the new development that we have along our development corridors. What are the qualities that we want to attract? We want to attract mixed use. We want to attract a project that connects, that provides several connections, that, if possible, increase the road capacity, that is multimodal in principle, so promotes different types of ways of people to circulate in the city that is compact and that is based on infill, so that we can get better use of the infrastructure that we already have in the city. That promotes complete streets, that creates a vibrant public space, that creates a sense of place, promoting destination places, that is smart with technology, that brings electric charging stations, Wi-Fi's, solar panels, and all the good stuff that technology's bringing us. And it's also, it's huge in design. And you saw today, one of the projects that we approved, we have the architectural and urban design standards in the code. We have been pushing for more attention to architecture and design. And when we look at the ALIS, so these are the checkboxes that we think this project promotes. So it's a mixed use. It promotes connectivity. So you see that the project has four different connections, access points. They have... They're increasing the road capacity, because they are promoting a... Creating a connection between Claretly and Central, the south driveway that will function as a public road connecting Claretly and Central, and that's a big one for us. And now the Bank of America, the... We have someone interested in redeveloping Bank of America. There's also asking for a connection to this road. So these... The ALIS potentially can access the signal at Alexandria Boulevard, so that's a good thing. Complete streets, although they are proposing a larger sidewalks, complete streets is actually deficient on our side, on Mitchell Hammock and Claretly. It will bring vibrancy, because they are bringing the buildings next to the road, and they are proposing patios and sidewalk cafes along Mitchell Hammock, and they are proposing a very cool feature, which is... This picture you cannot see well, but they will show you, a linear park along Claretly Evans. So that is a very nice feature. They are bringing smart technology, so we have electric charging stations, and they are... I think they have LED lighting, and they are bringing also another cool feature, which is a shared car, so like a zip car for their own community. And they will be also having to comply with our architectural standards, and the site plan is already very good in design, so we like, and they actually, they comply with everything that we ask for. So this is basically the presentation that I wanted to give. Just two last points. There is a lot of emphasis on density, which is... I understand why. The design plays as important role as density. And just imagine if we had the same density in the city, which is the same number of residents with the same area, basically the same density, but we had more connectivity between the neighborhoods, we would have a different pattern of circulation in the city. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that this project is aggregating five lots, and because they are doing that, it gives us the opportunity to have more... To reach more of those qualities, because it's, you know, the area is larger, and we can... Then we could reach to Central, that sort of thing. So it's much better than if we had five different developers developing the individual lots. So that, I think, was a plus. So now I'm going to turn to Ms. Pierre, and she's going to present the memos, and I'll be available for questions on the presentation and on the project as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Mayor, and City Council Members. This is a request for the City Council to transmit an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment, for approximately 12.36 acres located on the south side of Mitchell Hammock Road and on the west side of Claretly Evans Way. From downtown mixed-use, south of Mitchell Hammock Road subarea, and commercial future land use designation to the mixed-use, future land use designation. The applicant is Michael Hoof with Brand Properties. The subject of amendment qualifies as a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, and as such, it requires three public hearings, one before the LPA, and then two before City Council. And once those public hearings have been completed, we send it to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and if no one contests it, it becomes effective 31 days after the year. adoption. So this is the first of, this is the second, actually, of the three public hearings, the LPA was the first. So the subject property currently has two future land use designations: downtown mixed-use, south of Mitchell Hammock Road SubArea, and commercial. And it also has three zoning districts: mixed-use district, Division Street, mixed-use district, City Hall Retail, and C2 Commercial. So the purpose of this future land use amendment is to allow for a mixed-use development on the subject property to include multifamily residential and various retail and office and commercial uses with one future land use designation, which is mixed-use, and one zoning district, which is the planned unit development zoning district. The proposed mixed-use future land use designation is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations, zoning districts, and existing uses. The proposed development includes a mixed-use development consisting of 12,000 square feet of commercial and 297 multifamily units. The proposed planned unit development zoning district requires the approval of a development agreement and a conceptual development plan. So the DA and CDP are attached to ordinance number 1691, which is the zoning map amendment, which can be found also under ordinances on tonight's agenda. As part of the comprehensive plan amendment process, staff is required to analyze the impacts of the comprehensive plan amendment based on the maximum intensity and density of the current future land use designation, which is south, downtown mixed-use, south of Mitchell Hammock SubArea, and commercial, compared to the maximum intensity and density of the proposed mixed-use, future land use designation. So since the proposed zoning district is a planned unit development, we also analyze it based on the applicant's intended development program. The analysis of the maximum intensity and density of the existing and proposed future land use designation shows that there is an increase in multifamily dwelling units, mixed-use multifamily dwelling units, and an increase in non-residential square feet. The analysis of the maximum of the proposed mixed-use, future land use designation compared to that of the development program shows that there is a decrease in multifamily dwelling units, a decrease in mixed-use multifamily dwelling units, and a decrease in non-residential square feet. There is adequate capacity for recreation water, sewer, solid waste, and transportation to accommodate the intended use of the property. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1690. The city attorney reviewed ordinance 1690 and identified no concerns relative to the content and accuracy. The Land Planning Agency conducted a public hearing on Tuesday, February 4th, and they are at recommended transmittal of ordinance number 1690. The city followed all proper notification and advertisement requirements for the public hearings per Florida Statute 163. It is recommended that City Council read ordinance number 1690 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for review. Now, ordinance number 1691 is the proposed planned unit development zoning district for the property, and it's located under ordinances on the agenda tonight. So this is a request to amend the city's official zoning map, to change the zoning districts for the same property from mixed-use district, Division Street, mixed-use district, City Hall Retail, and commercial C2 to planned unit development, and the applicant is Michael Hoth with Brand Properties. So the purpose of the proposed zoning map amendment is to allow for a mixed development on the subject property to include multifamily residential and various retail office and commercial uses with one future land use designation and one zoning district. The PUD zoning district is compatible with the surrounding future land use designations, the surrounding zonings, and the existing uses. The proposed planned unit development zoning district requires the approval of a development agreement and conceptual development plan. The DA and CDP are attached to your ordinance. So the DA and the CDP allows for the following. So the principal uses in the DA will include multifamily residential and C2 permissible uses. Now, C2 is a zoning district that's found within the city's land development code, and the DA prohibits uses that are listed under C2 as a special exception. The DA prohibits those uses as any type of use within the DA. So the maximum height in this development is 60 feet. So Buildings 1 and 2, which they're closest to Mitchell Hammock, Buildings 1 and 2 are four-story buildings. Buildings 3 and 4, which are the residential buildings to the south, are all three stories. In terms of landscape and buffer, along Mitchell Hammock, it will consist of a 10-foot wide with an average of 20 feet in width, and shall follow the new downtown development and redevelopment district landscape requirements, which is a more intense landscape requirement than what's in outside of the downtown. So it requires an additional hedge to be three feet in height along the length of the buffer, so you will see that, in addition to the large trees and the medium trees. So along Claretley Evans Way, the minimum width is 10 feet with an average of 20 feet, and shall be consistent with the new downtown development and redevelopment district landscape requirements. The remaining perimeter will have a width of 10 feet and shall be consistent with the new downtown development and redevelopment landscape requirements with a continuous hedge along parking areas. In terms of transportation, there are two access points along Claretley Evans Way. I think you can see them here, they're going to point it out, they have a pointer that, there you go, there's two access points along Claretley Evans Way, and then there's one access point along Mitchell Hammock. There's also an access point along Alaphia Trail. The applicant also proposes an eastbound right-turn deceleration lane along Mitchell Hammock Road onto the project driveway. And the applicant has made, or has agreed to make best efforts to work with the owner of the property to the south, which is that vacant Bank of America property, on a cross-access easement at a mutually agreeable location with terms and conditions agreeable to both parties in a form that is acceptable to the city attorney. Now, this cross-access easement will also allow for connection for both the project, for the project to the signal at Alexandria Boulevard. The applicant is also proposing an east-west drive out, which is south of the project, connecting Alaphia to Claretley Evans Way. In terms of open space, can we turn to the next slide? So this is an exhibit that was done today, and the exhibit shows the open space for the current future land use designation compared to the proposed future land use designation, and then proposed, and then the proposed zoning as well. So under the current future land use designation, the minimum open space requirement is 25%. The proposed future land use designation requires an open space of 25%. But the zoning, which is a requirement of our land development code for PUDs, it requires that PUDs maintain an open space of 30%. The floor area ratio for the non-residential, you'll see the comparison as well. So under the current future land use designation, which is downtown mixed-use, south of Mitchell Hammock SubArea, and it's based on the acreage of 7.37 acres, you'll see the differences in the floor area ratios, the square footage. And there's a comparison with the current, the proposed, and then the proposed CMA, which is the actual, the actual development program. And you'll see that the actual development program, the intensity is less, and the density is less as well. So you'll see that on there. In terms of the architectural requirements, the project shall comply with that land development code. The applicant is also proposing a linear park along Claretley Evans Way. Dr. Correa mentioned that any changes in the intensity or density of this, the zoning, which is the planned unit development, will require that the applicant come back before the LPA and City Council, because it's a change to the development agreement. All the impacts were based on the applicant's intended density and intensity, and not on the maximum. So they were all based on the intended density. There is adequate capacity for recreation water, sewer, solid waste, and transportation to accommodate the proposed use. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1691. The city attorney reviewed ordinance 1691 and identified no concerns relative to content and accuracy. The Land Planning Agency conducted a public hearing on February 4th, and they are at recommended approval of ordinance number 1691 with an amendment to Section 5, City of Oviedo conditions of approval of the DA to state that the applicant will address the installation of downlighting at the time of site development order review. The applicant agreed to the proposed language during the LPA's public hearing. Staff has incorporated the language into the development agreement. The city followed all proper notification and advertising requirements for the public hearings per Florida Statute 166. It is recommended that City Council read ordinance number 1691 by title only and schedule a public hearing to a date after the Department of Economic Opportunity has reviewed ordinance number 1691. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff right now from the presentation?
Yes. Just, it doesn't matter, just a clarification, I think Dr. Correa, it doesn't matter who answers, but Dr. Correa referred to vibrancy. I think I know what that term means, but if you could explain what that means in terms of the mixed use and compared to the suburban plan, and what we're trying to achieve now.
Sure. So the new urbanism theory, what they talk about, and it's a beautiful image that they use, that say, when the buildings are set next to, built next to the street, right, instead of way back into the property, they create, they would be like walls in this room, which is the public space. So this in itself would bring vibrancy, because, to the public space. So what we want is action, right? The public space should be a place that people meet, that people use, that people, you know, interact. So having the buildings next to the, close to the property line and to the street brings that vibrancy, brings interest. So imagine that if you are walking in a suburban environment or next to a strip mall, right, it's not appealing if you're walking on the street. If you're walking next to a Park Avenue in Winter Park or in New York City, where a lot of things are happening, I mean, that is, that has vibrancy, right? We don't want to be New York City, but we can be, you know, we can bring vibrancy. The new downtown is already there, right? It's a pleasant walk from here to the Central Lake Park, there's a lot of things going on. You can stop by to have a cafe, to have coffee in Starbucks, you can, you know, do your nails, you can, you know, watch a show, whatever, so that is what we, that we're trying to bring, is activity in the public street.
So does that mean, then, you're trying to bring in more walking spaces as opposed to, like you said...
So we want to have walking, the fact that they have that, and if we can have the site plan, so along Claretley, they have this park, so it's a linear park, and they are, I think they are going to talk about proposing art, you know, I think it's an art trail that they call it. The buildings next to Mitchell Hammock will have also patios along Mitchell Hammock for sidewalk affairs of tables, so they already have that in their design. So that is the kind of environment that we want, as opposed to have a sea of parking that, you know, nobody wants to walk along, you know, parking spaces, right? So these are the elements in design that we want to propose, to attract the vibrancy that we want.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I could ask one more question. I already actually know the answer, but for the sake of everyone here, does this comprehensive land use designation exist anywhere else in the city?
Yes. So it is one of the, so we are not, we are not creating this future land use, so that exists in our land use element, but we have the dwell next to the hostel, so it's a project that was approved, they had the PSP, the PSP expired, and now we are reviewing the PSP again, so it's a mixed-use, future land use, and a PUD zoning, so the same combination of future land use and zoning. And it's also for a mixed-use development with office, hotel, and multifamily.
So the floor area ratio, the square footage of buildings, all that stuff, that's already in our code and already set, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And next, the applicant, you have a presentation?
Good.
Thank you.
My name is Hal Cantor, I'm with the law firm of Lawrence, Dr. C. Doster, Cantor &amp; Reed. Now, my task here tonight is to serve as your sherpa. I'm going to guide you up the mountain, and I'm going to take you down safely. So some people might say, "We're just here to talk about an apartment complex." And while that's certainly true, I think it's important to put things in context so you know the path we've taken, which is not always apparent to people who aren't in the development business. So when a company's trying to figure out where to develop a project, they first consider where that project might best be located, and what, why that location is superior to others. Well, here in Oviedo, you've got a really strong economy, you've got a vibrant business community, you have the vision to have something, a project like Oviedo on the park, you guys are busy, and it's noticed. You've got good schools in the area, you've got a growing employment base, and a government that is pro-business, but at the same time, also has, favors a community, a family-oriented perspective in the community. And all you got to do is come to public hearings, and you hear that, and you see it. Well, that's great. So all a developer has to do is find that property at the best location and build his project, and then everybody's happy. Well, it doesn't quite work that way. Why? Because the best sites are sometimes hard to find. And, you know, the premier property is not a simple piece to find at all. And in this particular case, Brand Properties developer had to engage in something that developers hate, and it's the word "assembly." And I thought about assembly, and I remembered, gee, I went to assembly in high school and stuff, but assembly here means something different. And they don't like it, because what they have to do is contract amongst a number of people to put a project together. In this case, there are five parcels, there are four different owners. And each of them has different personal situations, they have different timetables, personal timetables, they may have different views on value, and you got to get them all to agree to allow someone to get into this process, and it takes a long time, this has been going on for more than a year, not necessarily before the city, but putting all this together, so that you can achieve a plan that makes sense from a regulatory and economic perspective. Well, it's a hard thing to do, but my client has achieved the goal in this case, and that we'll be presenting the result of that tonight. Now, why is this important to y'all? You may say that, hey, these parcels are already subject to commercial development rights right now, and they are. They have a zoning classification that allows some form of development. Why not just let that happen? Why should you care? Well, if you examine comprehensive plans and land use plans, they get put together over time by a lot of smart people who have good skills and understand where a community's going, and they're elected officials, they're appointed officials, takes a long time, but over time, things change. The economy changes, the demographics of the area changes, demand for certain types of land use changes. In this particular case, the underlying land use was adopted, I think, about 10 years ago. Well, that means that somebody was planning it more than 10 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, I don't know. But today, in the, things are changing faster all the time. And so you have to take a look at where you are and determine if that's the right place to be today, and what we're asking you to do is take those... And what we're asking you to do is take those steps. So what's the benefit to the city to do, to adopt this new reality, repurposing of plans that are already adopted? Well, let's get back to the assembly process that I discussed. If these parcels, five parcels were developed in accordance with their existing zoning, they would not be done in a manner which could, that can be better serve the community. A plan development is called a unified plan of development. That means it's all unified under one control. So if you take all these disparate parts and mix them together into a plan development, the community can now take advantage of the work that the developer did to get it there because there will be a single piece of land under a single ownership and a cohesive plan. So I can identify at least six and really more important benefits to the community of putting this together. One is if you have five parcels, you got to deal with all those parcels with access. And when you put them, access to the roads that are already strained, when you put them together, you can limit the access. So there are not as many driveways going into the public, into the public streets. You can, if you deal with each of these parcels separately, it's difficult to provide for improvements that are necessary for a greater project. And that's what you can do here. Also, this particular plan has an alternate access, a beginning if you will, to help mitigate some of the traffic impacts on Mitchell Hammock. It's a parallel, it'll be a parallel right away. A better pedestrian design can be accomplished. Instead of having five different stormwater systems, you have one stormwater system. It's more efficient, it uses less land, and it's a, it's just a better type of design. And open space, open space, if you have open space on five parcels, it's a little here, a little there, and a little here. That's not a good way to develop. It's not the best way to develop. It may be the only way in certain circumstances, but here you have the option because now we're taking these parcels, putting it together, and because of the zoning, not only do we have more than the 20% of open space, or is it 25%? Thank you. Of the open space required under the code, you'll have 30%, which is not 5% more, it's like 25% more, whatever the math is, 20% more. So all these things come from putting property together like that. So what we're going to bring you tonight is what we think is an cohesive, well thought out project that has benefits to the community, may not be really apparent unless you understand how we got there and the benefits of plan development zoning. So we've got two primary speakers tonight. One is Michael Hoth, who's President of Brand Properties. He's innovative, tireless, experienced. He's committed to his project. He's smart. He has a good project. He has good product. He is so good that they invite him back to communities to build more projects. And you don't get that if you are not a good developer. He'll lead you through what the quality of this project is. He'll show you what vibrancy is. Then we have PJ Such. Well, okay, what can I say about that guy? Well, I can tell you some things. He's a principal with CPH, which is an architectural engineering firm, designed firm founded in 1981. I knew the predecessors. Corporate headquarters in Sanford, has 14 offices around the United States, mostly concentrated in Florida, but again, the US. I can tell you that Peter John, PJ, is a licensed professional since 1997. I can tell you that he's Executive Vice President of CPH. And I can tell you, I've worked with this guy for more than 20 years on a bunch of different projects, both here in Oviedo and, and other places in central Florida. I can also tell you that he'll give you some mind numbing information in his presentation, but he's a local guy. He grew up, he's here in Oviedo, he's a family man. He cares about the community. So those are the two folks who are going to talk and then I'm going to wrap up at the end. So, Michael?
I'm going to try and live up to that introduction. My name is Michael Hoth. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. I'm the President of Brand Properties. Appreciate the opportunity to present our project to you. Let's make sure our technology is working here. There we go. All right. As we stated, the subject property, we did assemble five different parcels from four different owners. I want to go on record and state they are all lovely people and they have been fantastic to deal with. So none of the stories that Hal was talking about. And I think a lot of them are here in attendance tonight. And we originally started with four, but in working with the planning staff, we came up with a way to improve the project and make it even better. I'll highlight a few things about our property and our project. This is the look and feel of what we're going for. Again, just the technical details, I'm going to start on this one over here. This will be the main entrance at Mitchell Hammock. This is a second entrance on Claire Lee Evans. We then have a third entrance here, and then it also connects to Alephia. We have two buildings up front. This is the main building, number one. It's a four-story building that will be serviced by elevator. All ground floor uses are non-residential. What's highlighted in, I'm going to call that coral, I'm somewhat colorblind, but that'll be our retail space. To the left of that is non-residential, what I'm going to call our amenity space. It'll have our leasing office, our fitness center, our club room. And then on building two, on the first level, we'll have retail at this corner right here, facing Mitchell Hammock. And then we'll have residential units behind it and for three stories above. Both of those buildings are serviced by elevators. We have three buildings, two of which present towards Claire Lee Evans and the other one on the new road that we'll be building east-west. These three buildings are all three-story. They do not, they are not serviced by elevators. We'll have a really well-done resort-style pool courtyard here, a lawn courtyard here. We have a dog park here. We have a bocce ball court here. This will be our, what we are calling our art walk linear park. We're going to really make that a lovely pedestrian experience and was, to expand on kind of some of the, the way we approach good urban design and to make sure that all of this connects is, one of the things we've done is we have put all of these buildings presenting towards the street with the parking behind. Then through the different layers, we have sidewalks, we have landscaping, we have street lighting, we have the building architecture, and then we have the side amenities, whether that be benches, art installations, that kind of thing. All of those come together to create a really good pedestrian experience. And that's what we're going to do on Claire Lee Evans as well as up on Mitchell Hammock. Additionally, up on Mitchell Hammock and our retail uses and in our amenity uses, we'll activate that street frontage by having like our fitness center, all the cardio machines will be in front of big windows. So as people work out in the evenings, you'll be able to see that. A restaurant that we're designating at the corner. Right now, we're targeting a restaurant here at that corner and in this space here. They'll have outdoor sidewalk seating with umbrellas and it'll just be a nice, another layer to activate the street. Two important points, right here, we have a secured access point. All, everything behind here will be the residential parking. We have another access point that's secured here with a gate. So all of this space, all of the art walk, all of this parking, and all of the front sidewalk and cafe space will be open to the public. The, the cross connection to Mitchell Hammock, when we'd started, well, like I said, we had four parcels and we didn't have this fifth parcel, so that connection wasn't possible. But the planning staff, through their guidance and encouragement, we were able to go get that parcel under contract. We think that's a big, big improvement to our project. This is our dry retention pond. Am I stating that correctly? And again, we'll have a sidewalk that goes all the way here. We'll have a sidewalk that goes all the way around the property as well. We feel that's really important because now with Sprouts over here, with the Publix back here, there's already a good bit of pedestrian traffic coming down Claire Lee Evans. We're going to make that a much nicer experience. We have 297 units. They're all one and two bedrooms, no three bedrooms. We feel that's a better mix, creates less of an impact on the schools, and I think that's really what the demand has been for in this community. We have 12,000 square feet of retail. That's just enough to make an impact and we feel it's going to really improve how we present our project to Mitchell Hammock. But it's not so much that I can't afford to be really selective about my tenants to make sure it's the right quality of retail tenant to, because truly what I'm looking for is I want to make sure that it's the right quality of retail so that it's an enhancement from our residents, residents and the apartments above. Let's see, 100, let's see, 58% of the units will be designed for retirement age folks. That means they're either ground floor units or serviced by elevators and incorporate zero entry access points, that kind of thing. We build the condo quality. I mentioned before, some of the amenities we have, we have a resort-style pool. We have a club room, fitness center. We'll have a chef's kitchen. We'll have an indoor bike storage room. And this will be the first property where we're doing a resident share vehicle. We're going to have an electric car that the residents can check out and use for short trips. Hopefully then that way, if there's a couple or a family that maybe is on the precipice of maybe they can get by with one car but aren't sure, maybe that will help encourage them that they have access to that. We also will have a ride-share lobby, which is, we've incorporated in all our new projects with the preponderance of ride-share usage, that's become a very important component. Some of the financial aspects, our average value of the residential units when we're done will be about $243,000 a unit. That is not cheap. Current construction prices have almost doubled in the last seven years. In 2012, we were building these projects for around $100,000 a unit and today it costs $200,000 to build the same quality unit. The average resident income at our properties ranges from $110,000 to $150,000 a year. The total project value at stabilization will be over 70 million. The project is currently slated to contribute $2.8 million in impact fees that will go to help fund infrastructure improvements. And our calculations show that we'll generate about $750,000 annually in property taxes. That is three and a half times what the most likely development scenario is under the Let's see. I just want to touch upon why, the kind of the key points of why we feel like this is a good idea for Oviedo. When we came to Orlando, we looked at probably 20 different properties. Out of all of the ones that we looked at, Oviedo stepped to the top of the heap and that's the one that we selected. And what I can, you know, how I basically said it is, when we came here and we saw what's happened across the street, there's something special about what has been done here and we liked that and that's what we saw as the appeal. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we complement that, enhance it, and extend that specialness to the south side of Mitchell Hammock. The parcels are already zoned for dense development. So what we're asking for is truly a down zoning and from a density standpoint. As currently entitled, not the maximum development scenario, but the most likely development scenario, where we will generate a fraction of that traffic. So it's less traffic impact than if it develops as currently entitled. By approving our application ensures that the city and the planning staff and their guidance has a voice and helps, you know, challenge us and make the project better, which over the last year that we've worked with them, we do have a better project because of the planning staff's input and guidance. By approving our project, it does provide the critical east-west connection. If these parcels were to develop individually, that most likely wouldn't be available. And then the other thing we think that's really important is it's going to provide additional residential base at the center of the new downtown Oviedo to support all the existing businesses that are out there. And that'll put them within walking distance and be able to support that. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. Does anybody have any questions for me before I hand it off to PJ?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Let me show my, my counsel's earning his money tonight. He's telling me, I need to show more pretty pictures. So this, what we can show here is this is a very good representation. This is a project that we have just recently completed and we've got residential above retail and cafe spaces. And this is a really good accurate representation where we'd have, we'd have some landscaping sidewalks, some planners, and then have an outside sidewalk seating zone. We've got a little bit of grade challenge as we go along Mitchell Hammock. It drops about four or five feet. So we'll have that kind of, those different layers of infrastructure and hardscape. This is another view. This is really how I envision how we would present the project at the corner of Claire Lee Evans and Mitchell Hammock, although we'd have one more level of residential above. It'd be a four-story building instead of a three-story building and we wouldn't have all that parking in front. This is one of our typical unit interiors. We use all luxury vinyl flooring. We have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, 42-inch cabinets, very, very high-end as far as the finishes go. This is one of our club rooms that we just completed. As you can see here, we have the kind of TV viewing wall so that on different game days or whatever, we have pool room. This is a little, it's a media room. And then we have a chef's kitchen, demonstration kitchen there. That get, and I think that's the basis of our pretty pictures. And I believe you had a question for me?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Cantor, I believe, used a term that I learned a couple of meetings ago, repurposing. In your plan of this development, repurpose, I kind of didn't understand that term in relationship to how you were using it for your development, repurposing. They, they used the term at the mall and they, when they were talking about repurposing that, how?
Part of the problem is, I'm the same guy. But the project, if you look at the land use approvals now, they're mostly commercial, which is going to create a lot more traffic and a lot more problems. And so you're taking the bundle of rights, when you have the commercial project, it's going to produce X amount of trips. So we're taking those rights and repurposing those to a residential use as opposed to a commercial use. I don't remember the numbers. PJ can tell you the numbers when he gets up here, but we only have 12,000 square feet of commercial, whereas what's permissible there is much, much greater. So you're taking those bundle of rights and repurposing them to a residential use, primary residential use as opposed to primary commercial use.
And the roadway from 434 to Claire Lee Evans Way, that I'm assuming when you did your repurposing and looking at this, that that roadway is going to be important to the project or in our overall system of how things or traffic is, is coming through here?
That connection is probably less critical to the success of the project than I think it is for the community. That, that connection, the connection here, you want to be my AV guy?
Yes.
Okay. So that connection, I really do think provides a really critical alternative because the evening northbound Alephia, eastbound Mitchell Hammock movement is probably the most congested. And so now all of a sudden, there's another option to provide connectivity. It also, I think, is going to provide a really important pedestrian connection for folks that maybe live or work on the north side of Mitchell Hammock to get to Sprouts and some of the other shops that are down there and do it in a safe and much more, you know, much better pedestrian experience.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Mr. Such.
Thank you very much. Peter Such, CPH, 500 West Fulton Street, Sanford, Florida. And most of the information that I was planning on, on, talking about actually has already been presented. So I'm just going to very quickly highlight some of the items, I think to reinforce some of the statements that have been made. With respect to the future land use, as it was discussed, you can actually graphically see where the downtown mixed use, future land use designation is in relationship to the property and the current commercial future land use designation. As was mentioned previously, this site has rights and they're very heavily entitled for commercial. In fact, the downtown mixed use actually allows up to 95% of its land area to be used for non-residential uses, very heavy commercial. It only requires 5% to be residential, whereas the commercial is commercial. So effectively, it's very, very heavily entitled today for commercial uses. And, and that's reflected as well in the, in the zoning that's there today, the commercial with C2 zoning, as well as the downtown mixed use has a mixed use district, City Hall retail designation for the interior parcel, and a mixed use district division street zoning for the parcels adjacent to Claire Lee Evans. And that actually is a fairly intense zoning districts. Today, allowed uses include banks with drive-through and includes daycare, retail, convenience store, and restaurants, all allowed today by right. In fact, the City Hall retail and C2 zone portions of the property also allow restaurants with drive-through. with drive-through, car wash and car sales with repair. So again, it's a very, very heavy, intense, entitled district there today. So why, why is that? You know, as part of the downtown, why is it so heavily entitled for commercial? Well, I think some of that can be found in actually the city's downtown master plan that was created and adopted in 2003. So it's a little more than 10 years ago, Hal, but 2003. And the south of Mitchell Hammock Road sub-area was described as this. "The existing uses to the south of Mitchell Hammock Road include highway strip commercial and government uses, including two shopping centers, several gas stations, City Hall, water treatment facilities. While this area was initially included in the study area, Mitchell Hammock Road is a substantial pedestrian barrier, and a viable pedestrian link across it is not currently practical or anticipated." So that was back in 2003. At that time, the only crossing of Mitchell Hammock Road was at Alafoya Trail, the pedestrian crossing there. So what's changed since 2003? Well, quite a bit, actually. First, shortly after the plan was adopted, there were actually improvements to the Mitchell Hammock Road-Alafoya Trail intersection, which, which increased safety for pedestrian crossings, put them under better controls. Then in 2007, Oviedo Way, or Oviedo Boulevard was constructed, and that has a signalized intersection with Mitchell Hammock Road with controlled pedestrian crossings. Fast forward to 2014, Oviedo on the Park and the intersection with Claire Lee Evans Way, and, and that signal there again provides full protected pedestrian crossings. So what was once considered a substantial pedestrian barrier and with no viable pedestrian links now has at least three that are provided to it. And development, in a sense, responded to it. The several gas stations that were listed south of Mitchell Hammock Road, well, they're down to one now. Two of them have redeveloped into other uses, restaurant and I believe a bank or office use. The water treatment facilities, well, we know the city's, city's studying alternatives to the current water treatment facility here. As far as development goes, Alafoya Square Shopping Center is actually providing an additional connection in the corner of its strip center, which was predominantly oriented to Alafoya Trail. And now they're reconfiguring the center, if you will, and providing a link now back to Alexandria, in a sense acknowledging the fact that there's more traffic, pedestrian and vehicular, potentially coming from the northeast rather than just from Alafoya Trail. And furthermore, the city's, I think, improvement with Alexandria and Alafoya Trail intersection with its protected pedestrian crossings across Alafoya Trail, again, provide more flow of pedestrians. So what you're seeing is what was a barrier to the north of Mitchell Hammock Road, now we have flow north and south, and actually east and west, which is important. So in reality, the character of the whole area has changed, which then means, then shouldn't the development character also change? Rather than heavy, 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 non-residential, shouldn't more of a mixed-use type of development be promoted? And that's what we believe we're providing that opportunity today. So taking a look at the current future land use designation, the very first graph or numbers at the top kind of show you what's allowed today. Again, as I mentioned, very heavy commercial. You can go up to 341,000 square foot of commercial and only required to have six residential units, very, very heavy. We're proposing to swap some of that commercial and allow for more residential, which is what you see in the second table down below. That's for the future land use map amendment. Now, our actual proposed development program, which is limited by our PUD development agreement, is actually only 12,000 square foot of commercial and the 297 units. So 20% less of the maximum potential of what is actually allowed under the comp plans designated today and changed to. Now, when we look at comp plan amendments, there's another thing we look at, of course, is traffic. And we look at that traffic from the maximum traffic impact potential. And the purpose of this slide is to show you, and all of this was reviewed by city staff and city's consultants, but our proposed change from the current future land use to the proposed future land use will generate less average daily trips and less PM peak hour trips. So the proposed change does not have the potential to generate more traffic. So we can feel safe about that, it's less. And of course, our proposed development program of 12,000 square foot of commercial and 297 units, capped in our development agreement, is only 20% of that, or less than 20% actually. Now, although we're located in a transportation concurrency exception area, and we are exempt from concurrency, we are still proposing several traffic-related improvements that lessen impact and improve mobility. You heard about them all already tonight. We're consolidating access. So instead of having five access points, we're proposing three. The statement that is made about the east-west road, that's significant. And Michael made a point, and I just want to reiterate it because it's not often we get to enjoy working with a client like this, but the city asked if there was the opportunity to create this east-west road. That property where the storage yard is today behind the express oil change, that was not part of the original development program, was not part of his project. So he went out and brought on that fourth owner, put that under contract so that this access drive could be created and effectively help improve the mobility within the entire area, mobility from a vehicle perspective as well as from a pedestrian perspective. And we talked about the, oh, and there will be an easement over that. I don't know that we noted that yet, but we will grant an easement to the city to ensure that that cross-access stays open to the public moving forward. We talked about the working being cooperative with the Bank of America developer so that they can also gain access to that east-west connector, again, just increasing mobility within all the parcels in the area. The intent and character of the development, Michael talked about that. You'll, as you're traveling along Mitchell Hammock Road and you come through Alafoya Trail intersection with the prototypical commercial architecture that's there today, you're going to actually start to see there's a change. You're going somewhere special. You're going somewhere different. You're now in the new downtown. The existing entitlements would just be a replication of the existing development program of prototypical architecture, strip centers, fast food restaurant and the like. What we're proposing is different, and the character will be greatly enhanced. The plazas, the patios, all the different items that, that Michael discussed will be provided. And as we have mentioned before, although this isn't the public hearing for the rezoning, the, we're coming forward to you with both the future land use map amendment and the rezoning. We're showing everything that we're proposing to do. This rezoning will include a non-statutory development agreement, and it will include a conceptual development plan. This is our contract. This is what we're limited to. We can't do more than this without going through this entire process again and going through all the public hearings again and coming before city council and asking to do more. So this is what we're going to be limited to. This is what we have to deliver, is this project. So it's, it's, in a sense, assurance that what we're proposing to you today is, in fact, what we intend to develop. Michael already talked about all the different attributes about the project, including the linear park along Claire Lee Evans Way. We're excited about that because we do believe Claire Lee Evans Way will be a strong pedestrian connection. And as far as the findings and benefits, you know, the, the staff has gone through a great job in, in pointing out certain aspects of the comprehensive plan. And I think, you know, the work just touching on real quickly is that this site is compatible for the type of use that we're proposing. For Policy 1-1.2.3, multifamily is supposed to be located next to commercial uses. We are next to all the commercial uses along Alafoya Trail. Policy 1-1.3.2 encourages infill, especially in mobility areas. This is a perfect example of an infill project. And I actually took it a little bit further. I took, I took Google Earth and I drew a radius around the center of our project, a 1,500-foot radius. So that equates to about eight to 10 minutes worth of walking, I think. And within that radius, we hit Publix, we hit Aldi, we hit Sprouts, we hit Stone Hill, and we hit the center of Center Lake in Oviedo on the Park. So everything within that radius is actually within a 10-minute walk of this site. So all the goods and services, grocery, retail, entertainment, restaurant, all located within basically a 10-minute or less walk of this property, which, when you think about the number of accessible units that Michael talked about being provided in this at 50, over 50%, and the fact that we're in a 10-minute walk of all these services, really supports the city's objectives for communities of lifetime, for a lifetime. So I think we're excited about that as well. Michael touched on this, and I'll just close with this, is, you know, again, our, our planned development is a contract. It will, that is what we're, we're limited by that, we're capped. We will provide more open space than the existing entitlements require today. Our development agreement, we have agreed to do all the landscape buffers in accordance with the downtown standards. We have agreed to do all the lighting in accordance with the downtown standards, street trees in accordance with downtown standards. Our open space is increased to 30% rather than 25% today, so we will have more green area than is required today under the existing entitlements. So that's very, very important. And this mixed-use will support the downtown. On Lot 4 of Oviedo on the Park, currently under construction is non-residential, some commercial retail restaurant. There's more proposed commercial retail restaurant to be constructed behind that, as you all well know, within Oviedo on the Park. We believe this mixed-use project will create a diversity of use and help balance that and support those non-residential uses that are currently under construction and plan for construction. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Hal.
My Sherpa duties continue. So I'm going to give you six reasons. Oops, I screwed that up somehow. Can you get that back? Huh? They're not in there? Oh, okay, surprise to Hal. All right. Well, I'm going to give you six reasons to support this project. One is reduce traffic impact. There is less traffic from this project than is presently permitted. Another reason, there's a reduced floor area ratio. If you take the existing plan and you look at it, the floor area ratio is .646 of the, excuse me, of the, what's there permitted today. Our, our plan is going to be a smaller number than that. Can't exactly commit to that. I think it's about .62 now, but we have to design the project and bring it back to you. So once we do that and have real engineering, it'll, it will be less than is presently permitted. We, we've told you a number of times increases, increase in open space. So I started thinking about it, all right, 25%, 30%. What does that end up meaning? Well, what it means, if I did the math right, it's about a third more acre. Now, if you think about a house site, a quarter acre is a pretty good size. A third acre is a good-sized house site. We're not going to build a house there, but that gives you the sense of how much more land we're providing for open space. The Mitchell Hammock reliever, I think, is a real hidden gem. I haven't seen many clients who'd go out and buy a piece because the staff thought it was a good idea for the city, but that's exactly what he did. Your staff is very good and persuasive. Retirement-friendly units, 58% of these units are for people like me, in the sense that they are accessible either on ground or by, or by, or by an elevator, and they're otherwise built to meet ADA standards. And you have something that is really hard to calculate and figure out, you have a good quality developer who's experienced, has done this kind of project in other places and been invited back. So with that, we're completed our presentation. Be glad to answer any more questions you have or respond to issues, Mr. Pollock, as they might come up from the public, or y'all.
One question is not related to this, but what is a Sherpa?
I think I know. Well, that, you know, those guys that guide people up the mountains and they really are indigenous to the area, those are Sherpas, and they guide them back down.
But thank you very much. I felt like I've been driving.
I'm sorry. It's, it's like a, a thing in Nepal. Not that I've been there.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Sorry.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, moving along. This is a public hearing, and I have one request to speak for from Katrina Shaddix. And I did notice on here that you have both ordinances. The next one is just to set a public hearing. So if you wanted to talk about both of them now, you're more welcome to.
Okay.
And name and address for the record, please.
Katrina Shaddix, 1133 Covington, Oviedo. This is a great development if it wasn't destroying over 12 acres of forest and costing citizens more in taxes. So today I want to talk about impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces and land surfaces, they repel rainwater and do not permit it to soak into the ground. Impervious surfaces are found in urban and suburban landscapes such as roads, parking lots, driveways, sidewalks, and roofs. Adding these surfaces to the landscape alters the flow of rainwater and streams. In urban landscapes dominated by impervious surfaces, rainwater flows across the impervious surfaces. A brief rainstorm over a large area, urban area can cause a great amount of water to suddenly flow into the storm drains and streams. Since no water is stored in impervious surfaces, they quickly dry in a rainstorm. Warming from the sun, therefore, has a much greater effect. This is one reason why cities are often several degrees warmer than rural areas. Toxic chemicals are often found in impervious surfaces and are carried directly into our streams, wetlands, and ocean. For example, oils and gasoline are leaked from vehicles, and pesticides and fertilizers are washed onto our streets and sidewalks from the non-native landscaping. Impervious surfaces cause greater and more frequent flooding. Wetlands filter and purify drinking water when the air filled in from suburban development or degraded by pollution. Millions of dollars may be required to install a water treatment plan. Installing and upgrading water infrastructure in order to accommodate the large volumes of water that flow off impervious surfaces costs huge sums of taxpayer money. So what can we do to reduce impervious surfaces? Stop destroying heavily-treed parcels for strip malls and apartments. In conclusion, not only do I oppose an increase in impervious surfaces, I oppose the cutting down of even one tree on this property. This property is one of the last green spaces in the city. It should be preserved, not turned into yet another strip mall. We should be financially incentivizing ethical development, like the repurposing of Oviedo Mall. That is an awesome project. I would love to see this and the Oviedo Mall parking lot. And repurposing existing impervious surfaces like the Oviedo Mall parking lot should be rewarded, like possibly waiving all impact fees. So the only change I would accept to this is to make this heavily-treed property into a passive park with walking trails and pollinator gardens. And if memory serves correctly, Oviedo is a designated Tree City of the USA. We should have that title stripped from us if this strip mall is allowed to replace our trees. Thank you. And I am a proud tree hugger, and I don't care what anyone thinks about that. I am here to speak for the trees and the wildlife that will be affected with tearing down that piece of property. Thanks.
Thank you. That was my only request to speak for. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this item? All right. Hearing none. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
Even though y'all broke my streak, I'll go back to making all the motions. I move we transmit ordinance 1690 to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Shaddix brings up an excellent point about the impervious surfaces. And staff heard a lot from me today about exactly that point. And there was a slide added about that. So I was glad to see, first off, that the comprehensive plan designation already exists. I think it's extremely important to distinguish this project from the 60-acre proposal that was before this body back over the summer. And it's very different. They're not asking for a new comp plan designation to be invented just for this. It already exists, and it's already been applied to another place in town. So that's something that's different. The other thing that's different is there is no lease that is allowing us as the citizens to say, well, stall on this until we get more infrastructure in place. All of these parcels currently have development rights. So that's another key difference to me. So then you've got to look at this and say, well, what is best for Oviedo? And a half an acre of green space splattered around is not as good as smushing it all together. And doing, doing the development as a PUD does allow everything to be squished together. So it's going to sort of be scraped clean, and instead of each of the individual five parcels having a little bit of green space in a parking lot and in a building, all of that green space can be put together. And a lot of that green space is going to be publicly accessible, if I'm understanding these, these sketches correctly. And I talked with staff- And I talked with staff about this a little bit. I do need to also say that I met with the developer back in December and got just a rough idea of what the intentions were. The 58% accessible by either elevator or just walking straight onto the first floor, that is critical for our community. I wish these could be owner-occupied, but as I understand the way financing works and condo financing, to build it in the first place and then the second layer of selling it to the end user, it's a very complicated process and it is not, it's just not feasible. So I think there are enough differences there that allowing this transition does make, does make sense for Oviedo.
Counselmember Chudnow.
I would agree with what the mayor said and add that trying to have those five properties developed on their own would not be as cohesive as doing it as one property, as one project. So I see this as a benefit for not just accentuate or being compatible to Oviedo on the Park, but it does have a lot of attributes.
Thank you. Counselmember Britton.
I just read an article, or heard an article today that 1,500 people a week are moving into this area, and it's going to go on for the next 11 years. We've got to have some space for these folks to live, and if we don't do infill, we're going to be moving out into the urban sprawl. And we don't want to do that. This is a good, good project to infill in an area where density is appropriate, and it'll help mitigate some of the pressures that's being placed on the rural areas. So I think it's a good project. It reminds me kind of the, of the Stonehill across the street as far as the architecture, only with apartments. So I'm looking forward to it.
Counselmember Seth.
I, I think Mr. Cantor mentioned that some of the owners are here, original owners of the land that were here tonight. And as a person who has deep roots in the community, we've had to undergo a lot of changes since our, since Nature destroyed our orange crops, and we had to go to other things. As much as we may like to preserve all of the land, it's not so easy. I think this is a good use of the property, and I understand that the owners of the property, they're doing what they, they need to do. They have property rights. And I think there's, it appears that much thought has gone into this project. You kept reiterating that it's going to be walker-friendly as opposed to having to bring in a lot of cars or use a lot of cars to access services. So I congratulate you on the proposed plan. Thank you very much for giving it that much thought and helping us into where we need to go in the next stage of our progress as Oviedo. Thank you, staff, also. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do need to add for the record that I also had met with the developer prior.
Okay, all right. And I too had met with the developers to get a feel for the project and have a discussion with them about it. The things that really stuck out for me on this one was the, the extreme difference in the traffic count on this project. Traffic is, you know, is a big factor in the, in the city right now, and the, the current rights allow for a lot more traffic generation than this project does. I, I liked the way they brought everything together and came up with a project instead of a hodgepodge of all different types of commercial development and strip malls and restaurants and all the other things Mr. Such had said. This is, this is, it really complements the Oviedo on the Park, allows that cross-access, which, you know, I applaud, you know, staff for getting them to, to agree to that. That was great to, to get back to 434. This is, this project really has a great feel to it and complements the city as well as the pedestrian walkability and everything to it. So, you know, I, well done, great project, and, and staff, you did a great job in putting this together as well. So, and with that, is there any other comments? All right, I will call the, call the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 14, zoning map amendment for Ellis of Oviedo. Mr. Hall, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance number 1691, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the zoning map of approximately 12.36 acres of land generally located south of Mitchell Hammock Road and west of Clara Lee Evans Way as follows. Approximately 4.41 acres from downtown mixed-use district Division Street, DMUD-DS, to planned unit development, PUD. Approximately 3.35 acres from downtown mixed-use district City Hall, Retail, DMUD-CHR, to planned unit development, PUD. And approximately 4.60 acres from commercial C2 to planned unit development, PUD, providing for legislative intent, implementing actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, and severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Mr. Cobb, would you like to enlighten us?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As you heard from both the staff and the applicant, they went over the essence of the proposed zoning district, the proposed planned unit development zoning district. What I would tell you is this, when you're dealing with a zoning district, what you're looking for, you basically have a couple of questions you want to ask. One, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Well, you have a proposed future land use designation of mixed use, and the planned unit development zoning district is consistent with that proposed future land use designation. It could be also used under the existing land use designations, but it is more compatible with the proposed land use designation. The other thing is, is it compatible with the surrounding area? If you find in your staff report, you'll see that there are PUD zoning all around this property and commercial zoning all around this property. It is compatible with the surrounding area. And then the third question is, are the permissible uses within the zoning district compatible with the surrounding uses of the existing zoning districts? The, when you look at the development agreement and the types of uses that are provided, it is consistent with the surrounding uses in the area. And so this application does meet those three questions when you're asking, should we approve this change to the zoning map? Tonight, you're not asked to approve it, though. Tonight, you're asked to read it by title and to schedule a public hearing that will coincide with the public hearing, this third public hearing for ordinance number 1690. So that is our recommendation tonight, is that you schedule that public hearing.
All right. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman. You got time? I'm going to try. Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we schedule a public hearing to a date after the Department of Economic Opportunity has reviewed ordinance number 1690.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Counselwoman Smith.
Good to go.
Madam Mayor.
I've got to be honest, it kind of ticked me off when I first saw both of these items on the agenda at the same time. I, I can't stand seeing a comp plan change and a zoning change bundled together like that. It happens sometimes at the county level, and I don't know that it happens here very often. But the saving grace for this one is you can have a PUD even if the comp, even if the future land use map is not amended. So I can live with that. So I do like that this will be coming back at a later date, but that, that was, and just one other thing for the record, it also drives me nuts in comprehensive plan amendments when staff recommends approval. That particular style of decision is purely a policy decision. The last one we did, we could have said no, just because we sneezed funny this morning. There's no requirement to approve. We are allowed to approve, however, if staff finds that everything is consistent with all of the, the vision for the city and the comprehensive plan. So that's getting technical, but those are my two cents.
All right.
I'm good.
Counselwoman Britton.
I'm good.
All right. This is just to set a public hearing, so I'm, I'm good for now. So with that, is there anything else? All right, I will call the vote. The motion on the table is to, actually, I just, motion on the table is to set a public hearing, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. All right. All right, moving right along. We're up to item number 15, resolution number 3882-20, delegation of authority to the city manager. This was an item that was tabled from the February 3rd, 2020 meeting. Mr. Cobb, could you please provide a brief introduction?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. This, this proposed change to the delegation of authority to the city manager was first discussed at your December 2nd meeting, and then we had a work session on January 13th in which you gave direction to us, and we made the different revisions. We also added a few revisions that we had been working on to begin with. We made some clarifications primarily to the types of documents that the city manager can execute on behalf of the council. When you discussed it at your February 3rd meeting, you had some concerns about the relationship of the, the policy with the, with this current charter and asked that the city attorney provide an opinion regarding that upon analysis. The city attorney did provide the opinion. It is attachment number three to your agenda memorandum. He did find that it is okay for you to go ahead and approve the proposed changes to, to this, to this standard operating procedure. Tonight, we would recommend that you adopt resolution number 3882-20.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cobb. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselwoman Smith.
I move that we adopt the resolution number 3882-20.
All right. Got a motion in a second?
Second.
Oh, no.
You can second it if you want.
No.
I like that everyone's taking turns now. This is good.
All right, Counselwoman Smith.
I did read the, Mr. Hall's explanation of this, and I agree with it and move that we adopt it.
All right. Counselwoman Britton.
I'm, I'm good with it. This was just a follow-up from the last meeting, and we got our answers to our questions.
All right, Counselwoman Chudnow.
I have no issue with it.
All right, Madam Mayor.
I appreciate the distinction between quasi, quasi-legislative signings and administrative, so that, that makes it all come together.
All right. We, we discussed this last time, so I don't think there's any more discussion on it for me. So I'll take a motion. All those in favor of, or I'll take, I'm sorry, take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along to item 16. All right, resolution number 3892-20, Charter Review Committee. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is also an item that you discussed in the past at your January 21st council meeting. You directed staff to seek applications for a charter review committee. You directed that that committee have a, consist of 15 members and that they be registered, registered city residents that are registered to vote. What we've done tonight, resolution number 3890, 3892 establishes the charter review committee and also gives its function as far as reviewing the charter. It provides how the council will appoint the chart, the committee members. It provides that committee meeting, committee meetings will be conducted in accordance with the Sunshine Law. It also states that, that meetings will be noticed to the public and that a majority of the committee will constitute quorum at the meetings. The resolution also describes the duties of how the city attorney and how the city staff will assist the committee, as well as the city clerk, and it is recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3892-20.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselwoman Smith.
I move that we adopt resolution number 3892-20.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Counselwoman Smith.
I'm good.
You're good? Chudnow.
It's just what we discussed.
All right. You good?
I'm ready.
Keith.
I just want to clarify that the, the schedule that staff developed, we're not bound, or the committee is not bound by that, correct?
That is correct. The, the schedule is based on having the referendum in November, after the November election. One of the clauses, there is a clause in the resolution that states that the committee, if they get into this, they realize that they're not going to meet the May 18th deadline, that they can come back to council and say, hey, we need more time. And knowing that it may offset us the ability to place it on the November referendum, but it does give the committee the ability to do that if they feel that they need more time to review the charter.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make that point.
All right, I'm good. So let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, item 17. All right, this is resolution number 389, 3893-20, Charter Review Committee Facilitator. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is a request for the council to select a professional facilitator to facilitate the charter review committee meetings and assist the committee with carrying out its duties, primarily to prepare any recommendations that the committee will develop to change the city's charter. This is also a discussion item from your January 21st meeting. One of the things, when you gave direction to create the committee, you also gave us direction to seek out a professional facilitator to assist the committee. We reached out to the University of Central Florida School of Public Administration, the Florida League of Cities, the Florida City County Managers Association. I also asked for assistance from the city attorney's office to see if we can find people who actually facilitate these types of activities. What I learned is that there aren't very many of them in the state of Florida. We did find five possible candidates to, that we reached out to through these various agencies, and three of them sent us proposals for the, for this. We're recommending that the city council select Darren Elkhine. He is the city attorney with the city of the land, has experience in working with city charters and city charter review committees. And so we would recommend the resolution 3893-20 does appoint Mr. Elkhine as the facilitator for the charter review committee, and so we would ask that you adopt resolution number 3893-20.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
I move we adopt resolution number 3893-20.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Madam Mayor?
Good.
You're good? Mr. Britton?
I'm good.
Mr. Smith?
I'm fine.
All right. Hearing no other discussions, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, we're on to the, the fun item on the discussion item, the appointment of the, the charter review committee and going through the applications. So, item number 18, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Once again, this is, you've been able to discuss this not only at your January 21st meeting, but also at your February 3rd meeting. I am, I would, I'm tickled to see that we had 32 applications for this committee. It really was a great thing to see. And so you had a discussion at your February 3rd meeting in which each of you would appoint three people and one at a time. And so Deputy Mayor, I would just turn it over to the council and let you all go through the selection process.
All right, so we, so the way we had discussed it, we each get three appointment, we get to, each of us get to appoint three individuals, and we were going to do it one at a time, going around, starting with the mayor, myself, Mr. Britton, Mr. Chudnow, and Ms. Smith, and then we'll go back around again, and we'll do that three times till we get the 15. So with that, I will start. Madam Mayor, do you have your first appointee?
If I could first ask everybody in the room who has applied to stand up, just so we can get a visual of who may have turned in an application, who is actually here. we can get a visual of who may have turned in an application, who is actually here. Thank you. Now, as I was reading through this, there's a lot of people, there's more than 15 people I would like to appoint to this, so this is kind of killing me that I only get to pick three. And thank you very much to everybody who took the time to turn in an application, because it takes time, and it is a commitment. And I believe that every last person who turned in, who has applied for this, really will show up to all the meetings and give it, give it their all. But getting to go first, and I know I'm drawing this out a little bit, get to sort of set the tone for the style of committee that this will be. And I don't know who my next two are going to be, and it's going to depend on what everybody else says. But to kick things off, I think it is important to have somebody who has shown a great time commitment, been neutral, been open to different ideas, and is not overly political. And Jok Toma, I think, would be great at that.
Who was that?
Jok Toma.
All right. And my selection is Beverly Evans.
I'm just checking names off here.
I didn't hear what he said.
Beverly Evans.
Beverly Evans.
That was.
Oh, he hasn't said yet. He was checking names off.
I will select Janet Livingston.
Okay. Mr. Chudnow?
I would select Randy Core.
Okay. And Ms. Smith?
Dale Voorhees.
All right. Madam Mayor, you're back up.
All right. And I always have to say why I'm picking somebody. This person, in 2003, cared so much about the charter that he actually was going to force a referendum and went and set up a group to try to get it reviewed when it wouldn't be done. Tom Walters.
Okay. All right. Regina Burswell.
I think I see them here. Stephen Shank.
All right. Mr. Chudnow?
Tom O'Hamlin.
All right. Ms. Smith?
David Barsky.
All right. All right, we're down to the last five. Hold on, let me just check this off. All right. All right. Madam Mayor?
There's about 10 people on this list that I still want to appoint. Catherine Townsend.
Okay. Jeff Botterford.
Let's go with Bob White.
Lars White.
Last one.
Sam Nasser.
All right. So I'm going to read them back and see if we got these correct. I've got Joe Thurma, Beverly Evans, Janet Livingston, Randy Core, Dale Voorhees, Tom Walters, Regina Burswell, Stephen Shank, Tom O'Hamlin, David Barsky, Catherine Townsend, Jeff Botterford, Bob White, Lars White, and Sam Nasser. All right. There we go. That's our committee. Thank you, everybody who applied, and thank you, everybody who's going to be on the Charter Review Committee. We look forward to getting the feedback and putting this stuff on the ballot, and thank you for your time.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I could also add, these are public meetings. There are public comments at the beginning of these meetings, and I really hope that a lot of you will come and share your thoughts, and reach out to people who are on the committee, and let them know where your ideas are.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chudnow asked me earlier about the Sunshine Law that took a bill, and I wanted to discuss briefly with the committee, that now that they are members of the committee, they are in fact subject to the Florida Sunshine Law. And I told you it would be the first meeting, they are now subject to the law. The committee is an extension of the city council, and as such, we're subject to governed by the Florida Sunshine Law. Basically, it says every meeting this committee has has to be open and public, it has to be noticed, minutes have to be kept. As committee members, you cannot talk amongst yourselves outside of the committee. So if you're friends and you want to get together, you cannot discuss the charter review business, that is against the Florida statute. But, so, anytime you want to get together, even the councilor, don't talk about the business review. All the business conversation has to occur within the meeting. You are allowed, as Mary said, to make a comment, there will be public there. You will then be governed by a facilitator who will steer you and guide you. You will come up with recommendations that you present to the city council at a meeting, and the city council will take your suggestions and decide what's, if they want to accept them, if they want to have their own, or whatever. But I just wanted to caution you, you are subject to the Sunshine Law, now you've probably heard about it, maybe never encountered it, but you have to be very careful.
Clarification, sir. As a member of the committee, that means also I'm not allowed to speak to council members about this, is that correct?
That is correct, except in a meeting, except in an open, notice an open meeting.
That's right, thank you.
All right. All right. Moving along, we're down to reports. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If I could, I'd like to just give my opinion on, there were some questions earlier about the golf course and what can, can't be done. And I just wanted to give you my opinion, looking at it. Right now, as it stands, that golf course can only be one thing, and that's a golf course. Twin Rivers Planning Unit Development, the Development Agreement, the Conceptual Development Plan, all say it can only be a golf course, and that's what it can be. The wetland systems within that are adjacent to the golf course are already under conservation easement to the St. John's River Water Management District, and so it, so they're protected, the golf course can only be a golf course. That's, of course, like I said, that's my opinion. If you want to direct the city attorney to give a separate opinion, that's fine. We did encourage, we, what can happen is that, is what happened last time, is that the owners of the property decided that they wanted to do something different. And in order to do that, they had to go through a process. They had to amend the Development Agreement and the Master Plan for, the Conceptual Development Plan for the Twin Rivers PUD. And one thing about that is, is that the minute they started doing that, we started applying additional regulations, namely the Econ Protection Ordinance. And that really hampered their ability to do what they wanted to do. And it became a, it became a struggle between the staff and the property owners, as to really, whether or not it was applicable. And when we brought up the whole idea that you're changing the use of the properties, and now you're coming to comply with our current code, they really didn't like that answer, but it was something that we were standing on, and we stayed firm on it. And so that is something that, you know, like I said, in my opinion, right now, it has very high-level protection, because the only thing that it says that it can be on that property is a golf course, and that's what we're using it for. So I just wanted to address that. Like I said, I know it was requested that the city attorney provide an opinion, and but I wanted to give you my opinion, and this is what I believe, that it has a very high-level protection as it is. And that's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Hall?
I will echo that. If the council was such, we will do a research and provide an opinion of council on the use of, or the repurposing of the Twin Rivers Golf Course. I agree with Mr. Cobb, I don't believe it will be allowed, but we will give you our opinion on that. And I'd also like to commend the council on their choice of the committee members. I think you've done a very good job, and I think, I thank all the people who applied. It's great to see this turnout. I'm glad we didn't have to scramble to get 15. Process of elimination, but I commend the council for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Moving along, Mayor Slade?
On the Twin Rivers thing, I think it would be a really great thing if we did go ahead, hash out the legal stuff, and make it such that if anybody ever did want to try to put something else there, we don't get back in the exact same situation we were in before, where everybody says, oh, what will the court say? Because we've got a friendly owner on our side, we've got, you know, the HOA surrounding, they've already said that, and we've heard right here, nobody thinks that there is a right to build. Let's write it down and agree that there is no right to build, and we can remove those rights, give that to a third party, and if for some reason down the road, somebody says, let's swap the Twin Rivers Golf Course for something else, the HOA will have a document that says, hey, look, city, you already talked about this, and because we agree that the rights never existed, you gave us a piece of paper giving us the development rights that do not exist. So it sounds kind of like a silly circular thing, but if they don't exist, yet we are always going to be threatened by legal action if anybody ever wants them to exist, why not give away the thing that doesn't exist, so we never have to address the legal end? Does that, does that make sense to you, Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mayor, it does.
All right.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
I agree with you, by the way.
Thank you. I'm grateful that this makes sense, finally.
Please, please, thank you.
Is there consensus on council to proceed with this, so we can permanently protect Twin Rivers?
Well, I believe we, honestly, we had another discussion item, and I think the result of that discussion item was that you and Mr. Cobb were going to sit down and work something out and bring it back to council at that time.
That was historic zoning.
Huh?
That was historic, dealing with historic buildings.
Was that the historic one? Oh, okay. For some reason, I thought that this was one of those items.
Nasser.
Okay. Is there consensus to take something back?
I'd rather see it go from the other end. Why don't we develop a document that guarantees it's always going to be a golf course? And by doing that, it guarantees there won't be development, and that means sustaining it as a golf course.
That I can't get real excited about, because 20, 30 years from now, what if nobody plays golf? I think leaving flexibility makes sense, but saying that it won't be built on, that leaves you all kinds of flexibility, but not the flexibility to build on. Maybe limited, we could say, well, maybe there exists currently a right to expand the clubhouse, or perhaps, and I don't know whether this exists or not, the right to build restrooms halfway, you know, really, really far away from the clubhouse. So I don't know what may or may not exist, but to just sit down with two friendly parties, the friendly owner and the friendly surrounding owners, and say, here's what, we're looking at this, we're not in a litigation situation, we can all just, with slow, calm breathing, have a rational discussion about it.
Well, we can have a discussion about whether it remains a golf course forever. That is the function of it, and that's the, if I heard the petition correctly, that's what the people who signed the commission, or the petition, said, that they bought their homes because it had a golf course on it, and it should remain a golf course.
That doesn't leave the homeowners much flexibility either. I think that, by the way I'm proposing, it leaves most flexibility for both them, so they would retain, the HOA would retain the right to determine whether it could be something different, and I guess we could litigate whether it's a golf course or not a golf course later, but we would never be litigating whether it was built on or not.
That's the same as deciding whether we develop it or not later. I'd rather.
No, not really. The choices between developing it as houses or it being a golf course, the choice is building or some non-built use, which could include someday a linear park if a golf course is one.
Mr. Chairman? I guess I'm missing something. Is there a pressing need to decide on this tonight? Is there, is there, like I said, I'm missing, am I missing something?
I think, I think what we're.
It's the wilderness area that's sort of prompting all of this, because the county commission has proposed taking something that was purchased with taxpayer dollars for the purpose of being a wilderness area, and everyone thought it was always going to be one, because of course the county wouldn't flip-flop, it wouldn't swap a wilderness area, and then.
So we're talking about two different issues?
Completely different issues, but related in some way, because we acquired.
So as far as the golf course, is there pressing need to make a determination on that tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay.
So I think, I think what the question is, and what the consensus that we're looking for is, is for the city manager, city attorney, and the mayor to sit down and come up with something to come back to us that we could discuss at that time, and have it as a discussion item instead of a report item on the agenda. Is there consensus to do that?
As long as it includes a discussion on sustaining it as a golf course.
Okay.
All right. Back as a discussion item, then?
I think that can be handled.
Yes.
No, 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 Mr. Deputy Mayor? I think we can do that.
Mr. Chudnow? You've got that look on your face like you want to say something.
Yeah, it seems that the city owns the property. The city bought the property to keep it from being developed, to keep it from being built on as a development. I would rather see first what the city attorney comes up with as far as verifying Mr. Cobb's opinion before we move on to any type of documentation, because if that already exists, having the documentation doesn't seem to be anything we need. So I would, I would propose waiting to see what the city attorney's opinion is. If it verifies Mr. Cobb's, then that seems to settle the situation.
There's still a need, and I think if we discuss it at a later time, the city attorney can better explain it.
Okay, yeah. So, so is there consensus to put this as a discussion item? Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So it seems like we do have consensus, and we'll talk, you know, and they'll make sure that they address everybody's concerns at that time, and we can have more of a discussion. So we'll look at the agendas, the future agendas, and see where that could fit in, Mr. Cobb, and we'll go from there. Does that sound good?
It's fine.
All right.
Babe Ruth reached out, and I know you mentioned this last time, I committed to go there, so if Little League reaches out to any of us, I hope somebody will be able to make that work, too.
Don't we have a, isn't this coming Saturday, an opening?
It is.
It's both of them.
I think it's both of them.
Okay.
But we never, we never got reached out by.
By Little League.
Little League at all. Okay, all right.
I usually go to the Little League, and if they're on different days, I'll take the Little League.
Okay, cool.
I think they're both going to be on Saturday, from what I understand.
Yes. And this Thursday is an exciting day. Is any, who else here is going to State of the County? Quick show of hands, are any of y'all able to make it? State of the County?
I'll be trying.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, the chairman of the county commission is trying to shake things up a little bit for State of the County, and he's doing an open-mic effort, and he's just going to pass it off to the mayors in the county for 90 seconds each. So if there's anything, and I guess we probably have to talk about it here versus by email, but I did send out, I said, please be thinking of it, so we can talk about it here. Do you have any big thoughts that you want to make sure get covered? Speak now, forever hold your peace.
I think we addressed everything with Mr. Kelly. I think he's already putting the presentation together, I don't know.
Oh, not for that. I'm talking about State of the County.
Oh, with the State of the County.
State of the County.
Sorry, sorry. I thought you were talking about, I knew the State of the County, I thought you were talking about our state of the city.
Yeah, yeah, State of the, yeah, State of the County is a, is a midday thing this Thursday. So I'll come, yes, thoughts?
I have a thought on, maybe you could ask them, with all the development they're doing on Old Lockwood, including what they're considering, would they be willing to install a roundabout at the intersection of Old Lockwood and Lockwood?
Oh, I already, I already talked about that with one person on the county mission.
Along with the sidewalk at the.
But this is more, this is their showcase piece, where they're just saying State of the County, so we're given 90 seconds to say, here's why Oviedo's the greatest. So it's not. So, it's not so much a time to ask, it's just a time to, yeah.
Just asking.
Okay, I, I have, I have asked, and I'm sure Mr. Cobb and staff will continue asking if this goes any farther.
And we still need the pedestrian crosswalk.
Yes, yes, we do. And Thursday evening, council member Britton and I are going to be part of, I think you're going to this, right? Yang Enterprises is hosting some business people and government officials from Taiwan, and they've asked me to come and tell everybody there about why Oviedo's awesome. So, this is, Thursday is just like the day of why Oviedo is very cool, and I'm looking forward to it. And we have down here the Oviedo Youth Advisory Committee, who, like the two people who have stuck it out till almost 9 o'clock, thank you so much. They have been working on some really cool video segments for, for the State of the City, so our, our thing, and I can't wait to see it. I have no idea what it's going to be. It's going to be wonderful, I'm sure. On the Ellis thing, I want to just throw out there the thought of us at a later time talking about encouraging them to do rooftop gardens, and I want to do it in front of, you know, everybody here, so we, we're keeping the impervious surface.
I didn't.
Rooftop gar, like some kind of impervious surface on the roof, something to lessen the impact, because 100% of the time on these developments, whenever you build something, even though on paper, the stormwater, the stormwater metrics are good and all the water should be retained, 100% of the time, it is not. So, the neighbors are always sad, and the people in the new, new project often are upset because the drainage never quite works in reality how it does on paper. So, if there is a way to help them think about, you know, if the 58% of the people are retirement age, having some sort of gardening opportunity on the roof may be something that might actually be economically feasible. And this is the first project that has had that big of a, of a tilt towards senior housing, I shouldn't call it that, this is accessible housing. It's everybody housing that's accessible. Just seems like a, a good opportunity. So, that, that's it for me.
All right. Councilmember Britton?
I think I'm good tonight, thanks.
All right. Myself, all right. The, so, I think it was yesterday or today, I sent over the draft for the ordinance for the Sustainability Committee. So, I sent that to Mr. Cobb, so we'll start going through that and bring something back to the council once we, we get everything hashed out. I kind of took the ordinance for the Arts Committee and started to tweak it and make it to Sustainability Committee. I know it's a, there's a stretch there, but, but there, there was a lot of synergies as well in it. So, I, I worked on that and I sent that over. We already talked about opening day, we talked about the golf course. This Friday night, Lion King movie in the park at 6:30. Saturday night is the comedy night, and that's at 6:00 PM. And next Saturday at 4:00 PM is Marty Vrato, Oviedo on the Park. So, we've got a lot of, a lot of activities going on there, and the, you know, it's great to see all the attendance, you know, at these activities, and the Parks and Rec staff do a great job with them. So, with that, I'm done. Mr. Chudnow?
I have three, three quick items. First, the update on Boys and Girls Club, the Oviedo branch. On February 3rd, we opened the, a smaller Boys and Girls Club at Antioch Baptist Church. We've got about 18 kids going there after school. We're also starting Phase 2 of the build out of the building at 55 Avenue B. So, that's moving along. Hopefully, it'll be done and open for the summer, which would be a great place for the kids to go when there's no school. Those hours will be 7 till 6, 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, once we get into the building for summer. On that note, please mark your calendar, there's going to be a fundraising event on April 11th at the Culture Center at Oviedo on the Park for Boys and Girls Club. It's going to be an artist-type event, so hopefully, there'll be some advertisement coming out. So, keep that date open. It should be a good time. And lastly, the Oviedo Police Foundation's having a golf tournament on March 6th, so if you're a golfer, come out and have a good time. If you would like to support the foundation and support the police event with a whole sign, just contact me. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I'm continuing to work with the Friends of Lake Jessup. We're going to establish a meeting so that we can establish direction for the community awareness about the cleanup efforts for Lake Jessup. Just a reminder, I will be speaking during the Oviedo Historical Society's celebration of Black History Month tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Oviedo Women's Club on King Street. I'll be speaking about the historical Jamestown Colored Museum. Also, tomorrow morning, from about 7:00 to 7:45, I'll be, now, hold on, let me just tell you, we enjoyed Java with Judith at Coleman's Barber Shop last week. Several members of the community were present to enjoy conversation and ideas. The Tri-County League of City meets Thursday, 11:30. The main topic will be the census. That's in Maitland, by the way. Java with Judith is tomorrow, Tuesday, February 18th, from 7:15 to about 8:00 o'clock, at the Pallet Coffee Brewery inside of the lobby of Canterbury Retreat. If you're not familiar with Pallet, their project, Love Missions, is dedicated to the abolishment of modern-day slavery, human trafficking, through community awareness and education. And that's about it.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, hearing none. We're up to future meeting dates. The next meeting's Monday, March 2nd, at 6:30 PM, it's a regular session. There will not be a meeting on the 16th because of spring break. Then there's a CRA Governing Board meeting on April 6th at 5:30, and then following that is a regular, a regular council meeting, regular session on April 6th. And on April 20th is a regular meeting as well. All those are here at City Hall. All right. With that, the time now is 8:47, and the meeting is adjourned.